Hereby call this meeting to order. This is the February 27th, 2018 regular meeting of the School Board of Indian River County. Okay, our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and Presentation of Colors by Vera Beach High School's Air Force Junior ROTC Detachment 043, under the direction of Wade E. Doos, Chief Master Sergeant Retired, Aerospace United States Air Force.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Detail post. Forward march.
You may be seated. Okay. Oh, yeah, the lights on. All right, next order of business is the adoption of the orders of the day. Are there any items board members wish to remove consent from consent to agenda? Sing non, Ellen. The Chair will entertain a motion.
If approved.
Second.
Mr. Seriously moves approval. Mrs. Justice, second. Speak to your motion or your second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next order of business are presentations. Dr. Rendell, you recognize that this is time for a series of presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. We have six different presentations. First, we're going to be treated to some music that is being performed by some of our students at Vera Beach Elementary. We'll have a donation for Casual for a Cause. We have a short video presentation on a lot of great things that have been going on in our schools recently. Then we have to award some of our teachers for some work they've been doing on their own to get better at their craft, so we're going to hand out some micro credentials. Then we're also going to recognize some of our community partners for their work with Step Into Kindergarten, which is a great program that we have over the summer. And then we're going to recognize some of our students who have been honored for their writing skills in a local writing contest. But first, we're going to be wowed by the musical talents of students at Vera Beach Elementary, so please make welcome Ms. Helen Newhouse's students from Vera Beach Elementary as they come in to perform for us.
Would you like to share with the audience like how long they've been practicing or anything like that?
Absolutely. This is our second year coming with the creativity at Vera Beach Elementary. These students started in August. They never played an instrument before. Their life's been...
We're actually going to skip to item C on the agenda. If we could play that short video now, gentleman in the back, if you could make that happen, I'd appreciate that.
On February 22nd, Indian River County teachers participated in National Digital Learning Day. On this day, we take the opportunity to highlight classrooms where teachers are blending teaching with technology to improve student outcomes. Digital learning is any instructional practice that effectively uses technology to strengthen a student's learning experience. It emphasizes high-quality instruction and provides access to challenging content, feedback through formative assessment, opportunities for learning anytime and anywhere, and individualized instruction to ensure all students reach their full potential to succeed in college and a career.
We've done a few things to shift the way that we provide instruction to help our students become 21st century learners. Here at BBE, we are focusing on our Slide into Innovation mantra, where we focus on science, literacy, inquiry, design, and engineering. And we use technology as a tool to help our students really explore those areas with things like Sphero's, iPads, B-bots, Ozabots, even virtual reality goggles for field trips and expeditions. So it's really been huge for our students, both in engagement and helping them grow in those 21st century skills.
Technology has been such a great resource for me. I'm able to not only not print things and have easy access, I mean, every student is able to sit down on a computer, they're able to access it at the same time, they can work at their own pace, they can submit it at their own pace, which is awesome.
Exposure to technology in the classroom has been great for the students because they've been working with laptops, tablets, videos, and they're preparing for 21st century jobs that we have no idea what they are, but they're going to be needing all kinds of technology and being comfortable with it and using it to collaborate with people that aren't necessarily in the same room as them is beneficial to their learning.
In my opinion, every single individual in the high school, elementary, middle school in America must expose to the digital learning. This is something you cannot get around one. This is a must-do thing for all our students to really help them to cope with the new technology and to face the challenges which we see every day with the all different aspects of life.
It's important to learn this as a young age, so as we develop into these, our careers, we have this background as to, you know, help us excel at the next level.
Technology is definitely becoming a very big part of everyday life, so to be able to learn and understand these systems or even create them later, that's really helpful.
Technology makes it easier to find information I'm looking for.
It's a lot more fun than learning just with pencil and paper.
Students across our district were actively engaged in activities that included robotics, formative assessment, video production, coding, online storybook creation, and so much more. These are just a few examples of the innovative practices occurring in our classrooms every day.
Definitely want to thank our Instructional Technology Department for all their support of Digital Learning Day. Last week was a lot of fun, and as you saw, a lot of great things going on in the classrooms around digital technology. Now I'd like to ask Liz Ball and some of our partners from the Learning Alliance to come on up to the podium. The Learning Alliance is one of our community partners that helps us with many different things, but one of them is teacher training. And so they're going to honor some teachers who have gone above and beyond and earned some additional certificates basically called micro credentials. Liz, I'm going to turn it over to you.
So, my name is Liz Ball, and I'm with the Learning Alliance.
Liz, if you can come around and speak to the microphone.
And I'll speak into the microphone. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about micro credentials and the program that we just piloted. The Learning Alliance, along with the school district, actually piloted this in support of the school district's initiative to improve climate and culture in our schools. The focus is social-emotional learning and supporting our students' social-emotional needs and really giving our teachers the strategies and resources and opportunities to support our students' social-emotional needs, and I think we can all agree that that's very important. What they had to do was complete online coursework, then they also came together as a professional learning community to collaborate on a monthly basis and share successes and challenges. And then finally, they had to implement these strategies in their classrooms, so they had to provide evidence of implementation in order to receive their micro credential. So, we had nine graduates in our first micro credential class, and I know they all can't be here right now, I will recognize them, but I would like to say that what you're seeing in these classrooms is truly inspirational. As a parent, it really gives me hope that we are taking steps in the right direction to cultivate creative, compassionate, literate citizens, which I think is what we all want to see come out of our schools. So kudos to this group. And I quickly want to recognize four people that could not be here tonight. Melanie Bechtel from Felsmere Elementary, Megan Stranzin from Rosewood Magnet, Mary Shavers from Rosewood Magnet, and Vanessa Gonzalez from Vera Beach Elementary. Elizabeth Barth from Vera Beach Elementary. Deborah Morse from Liberty Magnet. Luanne Lewis from Rosewood Magnet. Lisa Ross from Rosewood Magnet. And Robin Tuck from Vera Beach Elementary.
I'm going to continue to go out of order because I get to do that because I have the microphone. So, at this point, I'd like to have Jim McFadden and Paul Diaz from the Vera Beach Elks Lodge Number 1774 come to the podium. A couple of months ago, we were approached by Jim McFadden. He asked the school district if we would participate in the Why Our Veterans Are American Heroes Essay Contest. Several of our schools participated, resulting in many entries from many individual students. Last week, the Elks Lodge celebrated the winners of the essay contest in an award ceremony at the Elks Lodge. This week, we invited Mr. Diaz and Mr. McFadden to our board meeting here so that they could recognize these students in front of the board and their district family. So, gentlemen?
Good evening. Thank you. This year, the Elks sponsored a essay contest, Why Our Veterans Are America's Heroes. We approached the school district, and we got an overwhelming support from the district, from the principals, and the teachers in Indian River. We received close to 200 entries in the contest. Our judges were a little overworked, to say the least. The essays were excellent. The judging was very difficult, but we came up with three winners. The contest was broken down into two divisions, fifth and sixth graders Division One, seventh and eighth graders in Division Two. The six winners, three in each division, were forwarded to the district. The district will make their judging, then those will go on to the Grand Lodge, and the grand winners will be announced in July in San Antonio at the annual meeting. And the recipients of that will get a certificate. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Paul Diaz, who is the exalted ruler of our lodge for the presentations.
I'm going to jump in here real quick, get these out. Okay, in Division One, third place went to Rachel Estelore. Rachel is a student in Oslo Middle School. The second place went to Elizabeth Clark, also of Oslo Middle School. And our first-place winner in Division One was Molly Massey, also of Oslo Middle School. Now, our Division Two winners, where our third place, went to Claire Betts of Sebastian River Middle School.
Claire came straight from softball.
Second place went to Benjamin Wood. Okay, and our first-place winner went to Abigail Monfiston. Now, for the school board, if you haven't been given a copy of these essays, we will make sure that you get copies. They're outstanding, and you should be very proud of these students.
Picture time. About a round of applause for the Elks Lodge and their support. So now we're going to talk a little bit about one of our programs that makes a huge difference for some of our youngest students. It's our Step Into K program, and it wouldn't be possible without the support of the community. So I'd like to ask Karen Mallett to come up, as she takes over this part of the presentation.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Rendell, colleagues, and community. It's with great pleasure tonight that I talk about the Step Into Kindergarten program. That program is an enrichment program that helps our youngest learners get ready for kindergarten, both academically and in a social-emotional arena, before they start kindergarten in August. This program would not be possible without the support of our community partners, who you're going to meet in a little while. But before we do, let's take a glimpse into Step Into K.
The Step Into Kindergarten Program promotes readiness for school success and a positive transition into kindergarten. Throughout the six-week summer transition enrichment program, students made new friends and became familiar with kindergarten skills, routines, and expectations. Students developed relationships with other children and teachers, many of whom they will meet again in August at their home school. Some students even had the opportunity to ride the school bus for the very first time. Once inside the school, it was time for breakfast and a little socializing with friends. Each school day officially began with a morning meeting or circle time to build relationships and address social-emotional connections in the classroom community. Teachers used research-based curriculum and intervention programs to prepare developmentally appropriate lessons. The sharing of high-quality children's literature provided a background for learning how to think actively when reading and developed the student's ability to retell stories in their own words. Small group instruction was provided each day to meet the individual needs of the students. Teacher-led activities that involved a multisensory approach to introduce letters, sounds, and vocabulary supported the students' learning. Lunch was another great time for socialization with friends in the cafeteria or sometimes outside. Recess provided time for play and the development of gross motor and social-emotional skills. The afternoon was filled with more learning, fun games, and activities. Students learned to rotate through centers that feature hands-on activities, manipulatives, music, technology, and arts and crafts. Every Friday, students received copies of some of the books used during the program to keep and share with their families and add to their home libraries. At the end of the six weeks, families received a backpack of fun-filled activities, literature, and supplies to continue their children's summer learning at home. The Step Into Kindergarten Program prepared both students and families for kindergarten success in the school district of Indian River County, thanks to the Education Foundation and all community partners for making the Step Into Kindergarten Program possible.
Ready, set, go!
So we are excited today to have some community members who support Step Into Kindergarten, and without their support, it would not be possible. On tonight's board agenda, we are seeking approval of almost $200,000 in donations from our community partners. So as I name the organization, I hope you're here to join me at the podium. First and foremost, we have to thank our Education Foundation of Indian River County. We have Quail Valley Charities. We have United Way of Indian River County. And we also want to recognize Children's Services Advisory Council, or Committee, excuse me, of Indian River County, and Johns Island Community Service League. Johns Island was one of our first partners in the Step Into K program, and all of these community partners not only support the program in a financial manner, but they support our mission as an organization to ensure that all of our students are learning and thriving, so we thank you for that.
We have one more presentation, and this time I'd like to ask Michelle Mason from the American Heart Association to come on up. Each month, our district chooses an organization to donate to our fundraiser Casual for a Cause. Students, teachers, and staff donate in exchange for getting to dress out of uniform. Some students even had the opportunity to ride the school bus for the very first time. Once inside the school, it was time for breakfast and a little socializing with friends. Each school day officially began with a morning meeting or circle time to build relationships and address social-emotional connections in the classroom community. Teachers used research-based curriculum and intervention programs to prepare developmentally appropriate lessons. The sharing of high-quality children's literature provided a background for learning how to think actively when reading and developed the student's ability to retell stories in their own words. Small group instruction was provided each day to meet the individual needs of the students. Teacher-led activities that involved a multi-sensory approach to introduce letters, sounds, and vocabulary supported the students' learning. Lunch was another great time for socialization with friends in the cafeteria or sometimes outside. Recess provided time for play and the development of gross motor and social-emotional skills. The afternoon was filled with more learning, fun games, and activities. Students learned to rotate through centers that feature hands-on activities, manipulatives, music, technology, and arts and crafts. Every Friday, students received copies of some of the books used during the program to keep and share with their families and add to their home libraries. At the end of the six weeks, families received a backpack of fun-filled activities, literature, and supplies to continue their children's summer learning at home. The Step Into Kindergarten program prepared both students and families for kindergarten success in the school district of Indian River County, thanks to the Education Foundation and all community partners for making the Step Into Kindergarten program possible.
So we are excited today to have some community members who support Step Into Kindergarten, and without their support, it would not be possible. On tonight's board agenda, we are seeking approval of almost $200,000 in donations from our community partners. So as I name the organization, I hope you're here to join me at the podium. First and foremost, we have to thank our Education Foundation of Indian River County. We have Quail Valley Charities. We have United Way of Indian River County. And we also want to recognize Children's Services Advisory Council, or Committee, excuse me, of Indian River County, and Johns Island Community Service League. Johns Island was one of our first partners in the Step Into K program, and all of these community partners not only support the program in a financial manner, but they support our mission as an organization to ensure that all of our students are learning and thriving, so we thank you for that.
We have one more presentation, and this time I'd like to ask Michelle Mason from the American Heart Association to come on up. Each month, our district chooses an organization to donate to our fundraiser Casual for a Cause. Students, teachers, and staff donate in exchange for getting to dress out of uniform or casually for that day. The monies raised go directly to each chosen organization. In January, our organization was the... January or February? In February, this month, our organization was the American Heart Association, and we've raised a total of $3,408 to give to the American Heart Association.
Thank you. I am Michelle Mason. I am the youth market representative that works with all the schools in Indian River County, and I'm super thankful to have the community's support, as well as the school board and the schools. American... Heart disease is number-one killer of all Americans. It doesn't discriminate, and as a sister of my little brother, who's not little, he's like this big, he had an episode of sudden cardiac arrest unexpectedly. So this touches my heart, and I really appreciate all you guys do to support that and support our efforts. So, thank you.
Mr. Frost, that concludes our special presentations for tonight.
Thank you, and I'll invite you, if you're standing, to find a seat as we empty out here. We have a few, but... Before we move into the rest of the agenda, this time I'd like to take 17 seconds to pause and reflect the 17 lives lost in Parkland. If you'll join me in a moment of silence beginning now, please. Thank you. February 14th changed everything. Changed the way we do business. It changed the way many of us parent. It changed the way we think, and it's changing the way, in some ways, the district does business, but in many ways, it causes us to revisit those. And at this time, Dr. Rendell and I thought it would be prudent to go through the district's reaction, and then I'll give you a bit of what we can expect out of the legislature and the governor has proposed by way of changes for safety before we move into citizen input. Dr. Rendell, would you like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read portions of a letter that we posted on our website last Friday, kind of in response to the last seven or now 10, 10 to 12 days. So this letter is still posted on our website under Safety Updates. It also has been sent home with children in the backpacks either Monday, today, or will be tomorrow if it hasn't come home already. "The safety of our students is always a high priority in our district. We take seriously our responsibility to ensure the safety of your children every day." That having been said, the tragedy at Stoneman Douglas High has also given us the opportunity to review our safety and security protocols to make sure that we are doing everything we can to ensure our schools are as safe as possible. I want to highlight some of the steps we have taken over the past week to 10 days. "In partnership with the Indian River County Sheriff's Office, there has been and will continue to be an increased level of law enforcement visibility." This is in addition to the safety plan that is already in place throughout the school year. "Safety plans at each school have been evaluated and improvements have been made where needed." "Records of safety drills, evaluation of visitor check-in procedures, and staff interviews have been conducted about safety concerns at schools and district sites." "Safety walks have been conducted at every school to review perimeter security measures and identify any potential weak areas." "We will be adjusting our capital improvement plan to find ways to fast-track any physical improvements to campus security necessary to harden the infrastructure of our schools." "We have completed a full inventory and systems check of school and facility cameras, software, procedures, and conducted repairs as needed." "Principals have conducted systems checks on their school's internal communication systems to ensure their ability to reach staff and students quickly and successfully." "In addition to these measures, last Thursday, February 22nd, our principals received training on updated active shooter response protocol." "The Indian River County Sheriff's Office conducted the training, and we are very thankful for their support." "This training had been scheduled as part of our leadership training this past month. We'd actually had this training on the schedule for several months." "This training affirmed our current procedures, but also gave us information on how to enhance our response capabilities." "Principals, district staff, and law enforcement personnel will be working together to incorporate these improvements into drills we will have in the coming weeks." "Keeping Indian River County schools safe requires all of us working together." "Unfortunately, over the last week to 10 days, we have experienced an increase in threatening statements or comments, sometimes attributed to students usually posted on social media." "All threats, whether verbal, written, or electronic, are immediately reported to law enforcement and investigated thoroughly." "To aid in our ability to respond to these possible threats, the sheriff has set up a tip line. Anyone with information about a possible threat can call 772-978-6116, or send a tip via email to tips@ircsheriff.org." "Parents, we ask that you please monitor student communications and social media. These threats not only disrupt the learning environment, they create a sense of fear and anxiety in an already fragile climate." "Finally, I want to thank everyone in our community who has been so positive and supportive as we have worked our way through this. Many of our students have risen to the occasion and shown us how to respond with empathy, empathy, and kindness. Again, we will do everything we can to ensure that our students and our staff are safe and secure." Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell, so much for going through the steps the district has taken. I traveled to Tallahassee and have also participated in a statewide roundtable with other school board members on the topic. And if you aren't privy to what the governor released and what the legislature is moving, I'll just hit on the high points now of what's being proposed. Keeping guns away from dangerous and violent people, creating the Violent Threat Restraining Order, which would allow court to prohibit a violent or mentally ill person from purchasing or possessing a firearm or other weapon, strengthening the gun purchase and possession restrictions for mentally ill individuals under the Baker Act. If a court involuntarily commits someone for treatment under the Baker Act because they are at risk of harming themselves or others, an individual would be required to surrender all firearms and not regain the right to purchase or possess the firearm until a court hearing. Prohibit a person from possessing or purchasing a firearm if they are subject to an injunction for protection against stalking, cyberstalking, dating violence, repeat violence, sexual violence, or domestic violence. Require all individuals purchasing firearms to be 21 years or older. Exceptions include active duty and reserve military and spouses, National Guard members, and law enforcement. Establish enhanced criminal penalties for threats to schools, such as social media, threats of shootings or bombings, and enhancing penalties for any person possesses or purchases a gun after they have been deemed by state law to not have access to a gun. And in speaking with... Again, we've had numerous conversations with stakeholders and speaking with the folks at the sheriff's office. They explained that if someone on social media said that they were going to bomb a school, they could charge them, but if they used the word that they're going to bring a gun to school, they wouldn't be able to, so this would remedy that situation to where that threat would be treated with equal severity. The governor proposed $450 million in additional funds for the purpose of keeping students safe. The legislature has proposed a total of $400 million, and those would not come out of the FEFP. It wouldn't affect our standard school funding. It would actually be on the backs of tax cuts that were planned but would not be made, such as in driver's licenses or some of those lines. Those details are still being worked out. But the fact is that both the governor and the legislature are committing serious funding to this, and when you read some of their aspirations, it's essential that they do. Including mandatory school resource officers in every public school. These law enforcement officers must either be sworn sheriff's deputies or police officers and be present during all hours students are on campus. The size of campus should be a factor in determining staffing levels by the county sheriff's office, and the governor proposed at least one officer for every 1,000 students. The legislature agrees. This must be implemented by the start of 2018 school year. And again, the funding, if you were just to divide the number by 67 districts, which isn't how it's probably going to be implemented, that would mean close to $6 million additional funding to our district for schools. I anticipate it being slightly more than that. Provide sheriff's departments the authority to train additional school personnel or reserve law enforcement officers to protect students if requested by the local school board. This is where some of you may have seen the comments about arming teachers, and in the legislature, there's something called the Marshall Program. I'll detail the elements of that later, but it isn't... Just so you know, it isn't, as was previously presented, Bring Your Gun to Work Day, or forcing teachers to bear arms that choose not to. It is voluntary. It would be a voluntary program that is still in the process of being developed, but it does have a number of significant structures around it that I'll lay out in just a moment. Require mandatory active shooter training as outlined in the Department of Homeland Security. All training and Code Red drills must be completed during the first week of each semester in all public schools. Public schools must participate in active shooter drills. We are in the process of training all of our teachers in this, and in fact, we've worked and had feedback by President Liz Cannon of the Teachers Union about the way we're going to implement this in training our teachers and making sure that it's going to be done with fidelity and also that the teacher's mindset and skills are weighed in as we implement it. It isn't just going to be something that's foisted upon them. It is a true partnership in how we move forward with this. So, increase funding for safe schools allocation. For the purchase of... To address specific school safety needs within each district includes hardening measures like metal detectors, bulletproof glass, steel doors, and upgraded locks. The Florida Department of Education, DOE, in conjunction with FDLE, will provide minimums, school safety and security standards before July 1, 2018, to all school districts. So there will be a benchmark, a set of standards that are established by the Department of Education and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, I believe is what FDLE stands for. And require each school district that receives the safe schools allocation to enter into a MOU, or memorandum of understanding, with the local sheriff's office, and they essentially will provide the guidance as to whether our plan is sufficient or not. Establish a new anonymous K-12 See Something, Say Something statewide dedicated hotline website and mobile app so that if a student makes a threat down in Martin County and they move up here, Florida law enforcement, the intelligence community, is going to be on top of that, and they'll be working together. And also, as we've seen this whole concept of people repeating threats on social media, the point is, don't repeat it, report it. So this would be the opportunity to do that in a statewide system of intelligence gathering and monitoring for students who may be at risk is one of the ways that is being proposed to move forward. Establishing funding to require access to dedicated mental health counselors. Provide direct counseling services to students at every school. These counselors cannot serve dual roles such as teaching or academic advising. Every student must have the opportunity to meet annually, one-on-one, with a mental health professional and receive ongoing counseling as needed. Require each school to have a threat assessment team, including a teacher, a local law enforcement officer, a human resource officer, a DCF employee, and DJJ employee, and the principal to meet monthly to review any potential threats to students and staff at the school. And require crisis intervention training for all school personnel. This training must be completed before the 2018 school date. That's the $450 million. In addition to that, the governor proposed $50 million in proposal for mental health initiatives to require every sheriff's office to have a DCF case manager embedded in their department. That's already done in one district or one county, and they've found great success with it in that the DCF, if you're familiar with the Parkland situation, the DCF had issues, the sheriffs had issues, and the two of them, if they were both communicating, may have been more proactive in their measures. That is just one thing that came out of the governor's gathering, which he put together basically on short notice, had a bunch of people come to Tallahassee, teachers, stakeholders, and even the students, provided feedback that led to some of these solutions. So, in answering the Marshall Program, again, this isn't something that is definite or that the district is certain to be implementing. However, I would like to point out that what is being proposed in the bill, SPB 7026, is that the sheriff may approve a candidate to participate in the program as a sheriff's marshal after screening, which includes performing criminal background checks, drug testing, and a psychological evaluation. Upon successful completion of the program, the sheriff's marshal may be appointed to the sheriff as a special deputy sheriff for the limited purpose of responding to an active assailant incident on campus. They do not have other rights of arrest. There are concerns about stand your ground as to whether or not it may apply to these marshals. That is not contemplated. This is only in the event of an active shooter scenario or an active assailant incident on campus. And it will require a total of 132 hours of comprehensive firearm safety and proficiency training in a number of subjects. And the bill specifies that the sheriff or district superintendent may deny or terminate a sheriff's marshal. Funding may be provided through the legislature to support school district and sheriff office administration, sponsorship, participation, and implementation of the Marshall Program, so that we'll be funding allocated to it. And again, it is 100% voluntary by the school districts at this point. It is 100% voluntary by the individual member. They would have to raise their hand, sign up for it, and then pass a series of background investigations, and then periodic drug testing, periodic psychological evaluation, and periodic... So that would be something that we certainly would have to negotiate if the district decided to move forward. I just wanted you to get a sense for the fact that nobody is taking this for granted. Nobody is sleeping on this. Everyone is working. We're all communicating, and I guess that's it. If you think that's the case, please give me a call, email, sean.frost@indianriverschools.org, 772-584-1454. That's my cell. You can contact me anytime. With that, I think there was something else about our plans, Dr. Rendell. Did you want to go back to that?
We have safety and security plans in place. They're one of the few documents that we cannot make public. You know, Florida has very strong sunshine laws, requirements of public records and that kind of thing. Obviously, safety and security is not something we want to make available to possible assailants and threats. So, you know, the board and administrative staff review these safety and security plans and update them all the time. As I mentioned in the letter that I read to you, we are constantly updating those, and we've revisited some of those plans based on what happened at Parkland. But those are something that we can't just share with everybody.
Right. There's literally one document, I mean, other than student records, that as a school board member, we're charged with keeping as confidential material, and that is our safety plan. I was actually speaking more to the fact that this board met earlier tonight in closed-door session to plan our further work, and I believe, Dr. Rendell, we've asked Dr. Rendell to put together a broader workshop on the 13th to work with, in similar, at a local level, what the governor has done. We're going to do that at the local level, sort of at the micro level, to have a closed-door session with different law enforcement agencies.
Yes, we reached out to the leadership at different law enforcement organizations, the sheriff, the chiefs of police, and some other agencies, and we'll be meeting on the 13th of March to talk about, you know, what we're doing now. 13th of March to talk about, you know, what we're doing now, and obviously, with some of the information coming out from the legislature and the governor, how we can roll some of those measures into what we do next year. So, you know, we've already scheduled that meeting and have started discussions with law enforcement agencies on things we can do now and in the future.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for your attention, your indulgence for that. Before we begin our citizen input, and I will say that I do recognize that there are some candidates for office in here. Just as in the legislature, this is not a place for campaigning. If you mentioned what you're going to do when you're in office or things like that, I will remind you not to do that. The second time, you will be asked to stop speaking. Pursuant to our rule, the chair runs public input. So, with that in mind, the chair now recognizes Connie Peterson, Connie Peterson, for the subject of school safety.
Good evening, Superintendent School Board, everyone in their respective place. I just want to speak tonight as a parent of three young boys, two in the school district, one that attends Fairbridge High School. I did reach out to the school board earlier this week with some concerns. I want to thank Ms. Zork, and Dale Simcheck, and Dr. Jones for getting back with me on that. I am still very concerned about parents being notified when a student has a gun on a campus, and we should not be notified through Facebook or TC Palm or VRO News or whoever. I love my boys just like I'm sure you love your kids, and you would want to know right away. So, I'm asking that we look into that, that parents are notified at every school level, whether it's middle school, high school, elementary, of any case of a gun on a campus. I also want to just make note, and I want to thank you guys for the quick response, all the principals, all the different things that have been going on on social media. The district has responded excellent, and for the most part, except for the one incident, parents have been notified of any threats. I really appreciate the notifications, but we got to remember, not everyone is on the internet. We have parents that don't have internet. We have grandparents. We have great-grandparents, unfortunately, raising kids. So, everyone is not on the internet. Everyone may not receive that letter that's going home, because unfortunately, my kids don't even give me letters. So, it's important that we reach out and try other means of communication as well, radio, television, whatever, because not everyone is on the internet. Also, I want to just double-check while you're having those meetings, that our SROs, I love our SROs, they're in the school, they're there. I just want to make sure that they are thoroughly trained, because we have had a crossover of whatever, transfer of a lot of SROs, and I know a lot of them are coming out. So, we have some new SROs that are coming in. Let's just make sure that they're trained and know what to do. Also, as a teacher, I just want to let it know, be known right now, that I'm very opposed to teachers having guns in the classroom. I hope our district never gets to that point where we even have to think or have a discussion about that in our county. As a mental health professional, I'm glad to hear Mr. Frost mention more counselors in the school. I've contacted a superintendent in the past about that as well. I would love to see our district go back to having three counselors in the middle school district and elementary. Our surrounding areas have counselors in elementary schools, and I believe that we should be looking at that as well. That's all I have for tonight, and I appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Liz Cannon, you're next.
Good evening. There's been a lot of discussion over the last few weeks about school safety. It's truly appalling. It takes a tragedy of this magnitude, the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, for all of us to come together. But if that's what it will take to refine the plan, then let's do it. I can't say that I often agree with our governor, but compared to the legislature on this issue, he has some good ideas. Working with law enforcement agencies rather than arming teachers is the right move. Emboldening our mental health services for troubled students is a positive preventative measure. Increasing the age restriction as well as background check restrictions for purchasing firearms is a logical choice. Banning bump stocks makes sense. These are some of the measures that those in Tallahassee can do to make our children safer. They just need to make the right choice. I also hope they make the right decisions on how to pay for these moderate steps and not diminish funding for other programs. The Florida legislature has a responsibility to all of us, students and staff alike. History has not always shown us that they will do right by our students. Perhaps this tragedy could lead them down the right path. I do have higher hopes for those of us in Indian River County. I have been in contact with Mr. Green, Mr. Teske, and Dr. Rendell. Together, they are, we are taking the first steps to ensuring our plan of action is feasible, responsible, and strong. But we've only just begun our work. This is an ongoing process that will require all of us to work together as one to protect our students and employees in the worst-case scenarios. I look forward to continuing our work to ensure all students and staff in Indian River County are provided with a safe environment. With the district, while the district staff will work with the unions and other community stakeholders, I also urge the board members to do your part as well. I've spoken with Ms. Justice on this topic, but I encourage all of you to join us in this fight. Over the past few years, there's been what can only be described as a vendetta on the part of many lawmakers against the unions. The time to stop trying to push us down has come. We have built a strong relationship with the district, but the relationship with the board still falters. We need you to do more than just voice your support for teachers. We need you to actively speak against those harsh legislative agendas designed to attack the unions. My father was a teacher for 32 years. He taught all six of his children that we had to do whatever task came before us to the best of our ability. Do not try to do too many things, to do many things adequately. Seek to do the best at one thing. Ensuring that our public schools are the best that they can be should be the priority of all of us here, as well as those in Tallahassee. Let's work together to hold them to that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. Randy Himmler. I'm sorry. You are recognized.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Rendell. Good evening, Madam Attorney, and all the parents. I'm here as a parent tonight. I'm a parent of a 12-year-old son over at Storm Grove Elementary, right, middle school right next door. I want to thank you guys for everything that's going on, and I want to thank the governor for stepping up to the plate right away. But what I'm worried about is the interim part. I heard some of the dates that are being focused on July, the end of July, or the beginning of the school year next year. What I'm worried about is having deputies in our schools now. Our elementaries, where Josh went to Rosewood, we didn't have one. The city provided one in the morning and in the afternoon, which was a wonderful experience. But we don't have full-time deputies at the elementary schools. We need them there. We need more deputies in our schools, in the middle schools and the high schools, so that when there are incidents, if a deputy is busy doing something else, another deputy could step in. It's a "we" process, and I agree with you guys. It is a "we" process. I had the pleasure of speaking to one of the board members the other day. We need to work together as a community, as parents. We need to be all aware of what's going on. We can't just throw this on the school board or the school district. As parents, we need to be very aware of what's going on with our kids. Check our backpacks in the morning. Speak to our kids. See what's going on. Watch social media. But my message is that basically, there is no cost to the lives of our children. I have a son. Most of you have children in the school district. There's a lot of parents here. I think we'd all end our lives, pretty much, we'd be devastated if we lost our children. So, what I'm saying to the school board is, whatever money needs to be spent now, spend it, please. Let's protect our children in the interim until the money does come down from Tallahassee, and hopefully, it will come down soon. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments. Okay, that concludes citizen input. Next to our business is the consent agenda. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cersei moves approval. Mrs. Justice seconds that. Would you like to speak to your motion or your second?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. May I speak to the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
I just want to say that there are a number of donations on the consent agenda tonight, and Dr. Rendell may speak about them a little bit later in the meeting. I just wanted to say thank you again to our community partners for always stepping up and providing support and supplementing the education that we provide to students in our schools, and their, just their ability to be successful in life. I can't say enough. I'm blown away by the approval of donations tonight, so.
Okay.
I could keep talking.
You can keep talking. All right. Show that bill temporarily postponed. No, I can take up citizen input again before, because we haven't taken action. Actually, do we need to resolve this before we return to citizen?
Since you have a motion, a second, it would be good to go ahead and take a vote on that and return to.
Okay. Because the specified topic is school safety, is it, would it be out of order to take an action if you haven't had citizen input, in case it were? All right, we're going to resolve it. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Rendell, I recall you wanting to directly recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the adoption of the consent agenda, the board has accepted a large number of donations from our community. At this time, I'd like to ask members of the Sunrise Rotary Club to come up to the microphone. I am actually a member of the Sunrise Rotary Club, and I see a lot of my fellow Rotarians here, and they are giving a generous donation in the amount of $5,000 in the way of trees being planted at the freshman learning center. And I would just like to give them the opportunity to speak a little bit about why trees. It's actually a Rotary initiative, and to talk about that a little bit, and then we could share our thank you, our thanks for that, so.
You are recognized. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, board members. We are, as Sunrise Rotarians, we're thrilled to be offering this donation to the district, to school district. I've been working, we've been working with Robert Michael, our facilities, your facilities director, and we've, together, we've decided that we wanted to put 61 trees at the freshman learning center. A number of those are replacement trees after the storms this summer, and also, they're trees that are going to give the kids, the students, something to look out at nature, to look out their windows, to be a part of, to enjoy the outside environment much more than they have now. And this is a Rotary initiative. Rotary International has made a, the president of Rotary International made a commitment, asking every Rotarian to plant at least one tree somewhere around the world, and so that was what we decided to do. We have approximately 90 members, so we're two-thirds of the way towards our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chair, if we could just indulge them with a quick.
Oh, absolutely.
Since so many of them came.
Well, since we're just all over the map tonight.
It's a codec moment. It's always a codec moment.
I was talking about what a tight meeting I was in.
Steps, you got a lot of steps in.
He's one of us.
He's one of us. He's going to say sunrise. Sunrise.
It's called Sunrise Rotary for a reason. No, thank you.
How about sunset?
Come to your meetings. All right, since we've had consent, and back to presentations.
Thank you for that indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Rendell. Okay, and I apologize, I missed one speaker. Ms. Stacy Clem wishes to speak on school safety. You're recognized for three minutes.
I'm Stacy Clem, and I am here as a mom of two kids. I have one child at Oslo, and I have one child at Rosewood. I've been doing a lot of research this week on safe schools, and the underlying theme that I have found is, in creating safe schools, they're fine that students who feel safe and accepted have safer schools. Some of those safe schools' characteristics are that they accommodate and support the students they serve, they're inclusive, they are engaging of student needs, interests, and special requirements. A school climate that is contentious to a student isn't a safe school. A child being bullied or threatened doesn't make a safe school. This is exactly the climate that creates school shooters. We must take a look at how we are creating safe schools intentionally, internally. In the 2015-2016 school year, I realize that's a little older data. I didn't have the newer data from Indian River Schools on the Department of Education website. But that year, the whole entire safe school budget was spent on SROs. None of that money went into prevention. No after-school programs, no programs for the correction of specific discipline problems, no money for conflict resolution strategies, no behavior intervention programs, no money into the alternative school programs that help students with special mental health issues. There was no suicide prevention money, and there was no bullying and prevention money, and I know that we do have bullying in our schools. Quite frankly, that's disgraceful, and it shows a total lack of regard for our kids. SROs are supposed to mitigate the loss once the shootings start. All the things that we aren't funding are designed to keep the shooting from happening in the first place. So, how do we ensure our students feel safe and accepted so they don't come to school with weapons intent on hurting those who have hurt him or her? That is the question the school board should be trying to answer. I'm happy to help in any way I can. I'm very passionate about keeping our students safe. My son, who is at Rosewood, and Sylvia is at Oslo, one of the things I worry most about is Rosewood has complete access. Someone walks into that school, they can shoot the secretary right away. Game over. So, we need to look at access and the holes in our system. So, thank you for your time, and if you would like anyone to help you with research, I'm here.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments. I would like to, one of the things that we discussed was greeting misinformation head-on, and I would like to take this opportunity to allow Dr. Rendell to address a few things, and I have, as chair who's been through the budget process, I know that we do spend on these things. It just may not come out of that bucket of money. So, I would like to allow Dr. Rendell just an opportunity to address anything that you may have heard that may be misunderstood.
Yeah, I do want to clarify a couple of comments there. The last speaker spoke about the safe schools money, and the safe schools funding that we do get from the state. We do spend all of that money to fund the school resource officers position, and it's not even enough to fund the school resource officer positions that we currently have. We have to dip into the general fund budget for about $130,000, if I'm correct, Mr. Morrison, to cover just the SROs that we have. And just for a point of clarification, we share the cost with the school resource officers with the sheriff's department. We basically split the cost of wages and benefits for those SROs. The sheriff's department actually still picks up all the equipment costs, such as the weapons, the vehicle, and all that type of thing. So, you know, we actually have a pretty good arrangement with our local sheriff's office. But the safe schools funding from the state has not been enough just to pay for the SROs that we do have. So, if we had the funding to place SROs at every elementary school, that's probably something that we would do. We do provide a lot of the other programs that have been talked about in bullying prevention, you know, some social and emotional learning initiatives and things like that. I don't know if Mrs. Danpear wants to cover any of those. She looks like she's ready to go, so. Anything you want to share about some of those measures that we do take that we do not use safe schools funding for?
And conflict resolution I have in my notes.
We do partner with a lot of our local agencies, and we do have Dr. Martinez, who really could give you a list of the agencies that come into our schools and partner with our schools to provide social, some of the social and emotional learning for, at our school level. Do you want to come up and detail that process?
While Dr. Martinez is coming up to the podium, I do also want to touch on a couple of other things. We are constantly looking at culture and climate. That's actually one of the strategic plan objectives, is to have the best culture and climate as possible in a school, and the speakers have talked a little bit about that. Our middle schools have embarked in what's called the kindness challenge, the middle school kindness challenge, and so in their classrooms throughout the next six weeks or so, they'll be engaging in some kindness activities and learning about different ways that they can be more kind to each other. So, we're already doing some things in the middle school, which is typically one of the areas that we see the most of those negative issues happen. So, Dr. Martinez.
Good evening, Dr. Rendell, board members, and all members of the community here. I appreciate the concerns and the input, and we do have, we do allocate the safe school money to fund our SROs, but in addition to that... money to fund our SROs, but in addition to that, out of the general fund, we do have social-emotional support services for our students. We have behavioral intervention specialists at every single school. And this has been a year of training, and we've invested numerous hours in training our behavioral intervention specialists to address social, emotional, and behavioral needs at our schools. And we are only getting better at our craft in doing this, not only working directly with students, but in addition to that, of being able to coach teachers within the classroom. We've also embarked for the past couple of years in PBIS, and we are training our staff and have very high expectations of our schools of implementing positive behavioral intervention supports within the schools. In addition to other programs, we have schools that have conscious discipline. So culture and climate is something that we have always been embracing in this district. It's part of the strategic plan. It has very specific targets that we will be addressing. We also utilize some of our IDEA when we are doing response to intervention, and we're providing the supports for our students through that. So there is many other funding sources that are not safe schools that provide this, but in addition to that, there are other foundations and community-based organizations. In the middle schools, we have teen dating violence curriculum that helps students in, all the way from, actually, from sixth grade to 12th grade, develop skills that they need to preventive measures. We work in alignment with the Monique Burke Foundation with Child Safety Matters, which is child abuse and bullying prevention curriculum, and we've been doing that for five years. Every year, they come and train our behavioral intervention specialists and other support folks in our schools to be able to carry out those lessons where, and we've had a lot of, we've even had disclosures during our experiences. So we utilize, to the best of our ability and our funding sources, we do partner with community-based organizations. In our middle schools, we also have the Life Skills, which is a very strong evidence-based program. We have the Life Skills in six elementary schools as well for the past two years, and these are funded through the Substance Awareness Center, and it is this, the Baldwin Curriculum that provides life skills and the ability for students to do conflict resolution and to develop those adolescent skills that are needed to actually be able to mitigate their circumstance and develop their skills. So we do have all these programs in place. We have frameworks. We have an RJ coordinator. It's not a full-time position, but it's a person that works training our guidance counselors and support staff on implementing RJ practices in our schools, that restorative justice practices, that deal with conflict resolution, and teach our students how to amend relationships and be proactive. So, I mean, not having all the list in front of me, but if I were to go down a list, we have a lot of, not only frameworks programs, but we also train our teachers with strategies. And one of our ultimate goals with the behavioral intervention specialists is actually to have the, this staff member in the school be able to provide direct services to students, but in addition to that, to work side-by-side with teachers as needed. So we are putting in place many proactive measures, and we've had them for a couple of years now. We're just expanding and enhancing our practices. We work with USF in training. We do monthly training with our staff so that they could continue to develop and enhance their skills.
Thank you, Dr. Torres Martinez. Always good to be able to highlight the good work you do. So I appreciate the speaker giving us that opportunity to do so, and to make sure things don't become contentious, as was one of the stated goals. I do know that most of our schools have security and Raptor systems. Are we allowed to?
Yes.
I guess I've already said that.
Yeah, there's a visitor check-in system, a protocol, and placed at each of our schools in which any visitor is supposed to go through the Raptor background check system, driver's license, turn over and scan, and it goes through the FDLE database. I also do want to comment on the fact that Rosewood Elementary is actually a single point of entry school. You can only get into the school through the front office, so it's one of our more secure locations. I will take the comments that were made by the speaker, though, and talk to our security personnel to see if there's anything else that we could do to increase that security.
Thank you. Mrs. Justice.
I recognize I'm out of order, but I just wanted to make a point, if I could. If you see something, say something goes far beyond just students saying something. I think it's parents, too. We are all partners in keeping our school safe and working together. So I do ask parents, if you're on a school campus and you see something that does concern you, please reach out to school-based leadership of the district to let them know about that. We are all in this together to keep our students safe, and I look forward to a healthy and safe partnership with all of our stakeholders, continuing on.
Thank you. And just to springboard on that, don't take a photo and share it to Facebook, and share a vulnerability if one exists. Don't repeat it, report it. Again, let's get that in our heads. Don't repeat it, report it. We do have the tip line for our purpose. And I also like the idea that we're highlighting the concept of the safe schools allocation not being enough. And in my conversation with leadership in Tallahassee, that was what Dr. Rendell told me would be the best, is if we can increase that bucket, because that lets us do our job at the local level, so that we can make determinations. We don't necessarily want to see mandates come down from Tallahassee that say, you need single point of entry, and we've already, and they give us money for that, and we've already spent money on that. That doesn't help us. So by just increasing that categorical, that will make this district a better place, because we'll go into those closed-door sessions, we'll consult with the experts, and we will do what is best for student and staff safety. So with that, I think we're back on the agenda, and I appreciate the opportunity to have that conversation in an open and public forum. Very good. So we have the consent agenda has been passed. We are now on the action agenda. Action Agenda A, Public Hearing and Board Approval of Recommended Instructional Materials. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As part of the instructional materials adoption process, the school board must receive public comment during a public hearing and meeting in accordance with the School Board Policy 0169.1, public participation. The Instructional Materials Adoption Committee is recommending adoption of the materials for science instructional materials for the 18-19 school year. The instructional materials represent the committee's selected materials for the courses listed. The cost of this adoption depends on which plan the board chooses to approve. Option 1A is $1,537,895.41. Option 1A is $1,625,807.61. Option 2, $1,650,179.91. And then Option 2A, $2,4768.66. It would now be appropriate for the school board to receive public comment and act on the proposed instructional materials for Science K-12. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. This item deals with the approval of recommended instructional materials. Dr. Rendell, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state statute?
I have.
We now recess this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. Dr. Rendell, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
We have not received any written responses, Mr. Chair.
At this time, the public is invited to address this issue. Would anybody like to address this issue? Please take the podium or form a line. Slow down. Do you have them? Have the room under control? Okay. All righty then. Is there any individual representing an organization or his own personal or public interest who wishes to speak? Okay, the chair concludes that the announced public hearing on instructional materials or adoption of the science curriculum has been conducted pursuant to notice, and that ample opportunity to address this issue has been provided to all. The board meeting is reconvened at this time. Okay. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval for the board to adopt Option 1A.
1A. Do I hear a second? Second. I'll second that motion. I knew this was going to be a fun one. Here we go. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mrs. Justice?
Sure. We addressed this issue at a recent workshop, and we had a lot of discussion surrounding what the best option would be for our students. And I've reviewed all of the backup materials, and I feel Option 1A serves students and allows us to spend quite a bit of money on instructional materials, more than what we were, what the allocation was. But we recognize that it's very important to not only put science books into the hands of our students, but also to engage our students in science. So part of this is also, you know, lab materials and making sure that we're making science come alive. So I'm happy with Option 1A. I've been assured by district staff that in choosing Option 1A, that if a student that doesn't necessarily have a textbook that comes home with them, would like to have a textbook to go home with them and stay at their house with them, they will be provided one with this plan for those specific chemistry, physics, and anatomy courses. So as a parent, I'm comfortable with it, and that's why I've made this choice.
Thank you. At this time, rather than opining, I would like to ask Dr. Rendell to explain what 1A is, just in the grand scope of things, and if, how it relates to the recommendation of the committee for this adoption process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There has actually been a committee made up of teachers, other staff members, parents, and even some students that have reviewed these science materials and the different packages that publishers and other instructional materials companies provide. And they actually recommended Option 1, which is basically a classroom set of instructional materials, such as textbooks, for every science-related classroom. Also, lots of manipulatives or laboratory materials and that types of things, but basically 30 textbooks per class, so to speak. Option 1A, it's my understanding, is 35 of those instructional materials or copies of textbooks and that kind of thing. And when you get to Option 2, it's enough textbooks or materials to go home with every student, but not any would be there in the class. You would be relying on the students to bring materials to and from class every day. And then Option 2A is enough instructional materials, i.e. textbooks, that there would be a class set left in the classroom every day, and kids would have enough to take one home and leave it home. I believe that's the four various options. Mrs. Dampier, did I get that right?
Yes, you did. Cave through 2 is, they're science kits, so they're not hardback books for all options. Hands-on.
Okay. And in case you haven't watched the workshop meeting, I am a former science teacher, and I used to have to sign out books and collect books and do all those things, and I asked a number of questions of Ms. Teskey, who I believe had headed up this adoption process or oversaw it.
Doctor Jones.
Facilitated the, and Doctor Jones, of course, for whom I worked as a teacher. And so I know this, I know this subject well. I know that, well, I don't know. I assume that other board members have heard that parents wish to have a hardbound book for every student. That carries a cost of at least $380,000 additional dollars. And this board member has completely revisited all of his priorities over the last week, and I want mental health, I want safety, I want to be able to have those dollars to spend a million other places than on a take-home book that I summarized as the committee didn't want it, the students say they don't want it, and we don't have the money for it. Again, we were, the budget was 1.3 million roughly, right, or, Mr. Morrison? We were, our original budget estimate for this process was 1.3?
Yes, sir. I would be remiss not to remind the board, however, that in September of last year, at the final public hearing, that we, the board approved via resolution, Resolution 2018-03, where we exercised flexibility over instructional materials in the categorical in the amount of 1.1 million dollars. So the 1.3 million dollars for this year that is proposed in the legislature, don't forget that there are various deductions from that. So there's a prorata share that goes to the charter schools, there's also other categoricals that are included in there. So my recommendation to the board, based on the 1.1 million dollars that is, was exercised in September of last year, plus the potential funding for the upcoming year, which it's a cash flow management, because we only get 1/12 of that every month, would be to, in the range of 1.7, 1.8 million dollars is the affordability, based on the budget and also what you have categorically flexed last year and put into the fund balance.
Okay. Mrs. Justice.
I just wanted to make an additional point. In the workshop, and I don't know how many people watch it, but we discussed this for quite some time. And the students do have access to the materials online, but what we talked about and what we recognized was that not every student has access to a computer at home to access this material, and that is a concern for me. I personally, I know that not all of our students have equal access to technology in their homes, and we need to be mindful of that. So again, my position in doing this is that there will be a classroom set in every classroom for the students taking that course to use. There will be an additional 10 to 15 books, 10 to 15 books in every classroom that a student can take home with them and leave at home if they choose to do that. And I have been assured that if, for some reason, we have more students that want to take them home that are in the classroom, that we will make sure that we make accommodations to make that happen. So rather than buying a lot of books that are going to sit at home and maybe not be used, I felt that it was in the best interest of the school district and the $380,000 to $500,000 that we could have spent on books that may or may not be used, to reserve that now and to make sure that we meet individual student needs.
Okay. Any other debate? Mrs. Zork.
Yes. Mr. Morrison, so my understanding is our budget amount is 1.7 million for the books? That would be my recommendation to the board, based on the categorical flex resolution that was passed last September, plus the proposed funding for next year, less the deductions that we, that we think are going to be made to that proposed funding. So we're under budget if we look at Option 1A. I think my question tonight is, for Option 1 that was proposed by the committee, and then we go to Option 1A, which is a $87,911 increase, I want to know, how many books did we add? Because when I do my numbers, it seems like we're paying a lot of money for these additional books. Do we know how many books is covered in the 87,000? Because we're, it says each teacher receives 10 to 15 extra textbooks. I just want to make sure that we're not playing government up here and paying $800 for a textbook.
Fair question.
Some of our textbooks were 170-some dollars. At chemistry, some of the higher-level books are 170 dollars per textbook.
Okay, so we don't know how many exactly we're getting for the extra $87,000 if we go with Option 1A?
Mrs. Teskey, do you want to come up? Because she did all the calculations, and so she has a better idea of.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, Superintendent, and the public. One of the main pieces that was the most difficult with just giving a number is because it's so different when you talk about, we're talking about a broad amount, but you have secondary, so your high school books that are 170, 150 apiece, whereas you have your secondary books, which ended up costing 19 or 25 if you purchased the digital component. So it had to do with the fact that bundles saved us money if we bundled and went with the bundles that had class sets. So you're talking about seven different publishers. That was the other component that we really had to take into account in here. Each publisher had a different way of bundling, and each publisher had a different amount per that bundle. Some of their deal, it was better to go class set, and that's where, in the end, when that was what the committee had decided they really would like to do, that worked out best for us monetary-wise anyway, for us to have the class sets. And then within the board workshop, and the suggestion was to have the additional 10 to 15 books, even though when you look at this on, when you look at the, on paper, 1A compared to, are you asking to compare that to 1? Is that the difference that you're asking to compare it to? are you asking to compare that to 1? Is that the difference that you're asking to compare it to?
Well, I wanna know, how many books are we adding for the additional eighty-seven thousand?
So you're adding, you're, you're basically looking at chemistry, physics, anatomy, and physiology. So you're looking at about twelve hundred for your high school books. Then you're looking at...
Do we have an average cost per unit for the delta?
Every unit, and every unit's different, yes. So there, I mean, you've got from eight, like marine sciences and eighty-four dollar, eighty-four dollar bundle. But again, you go back to biology and earth space, that was considered together. That was with your digital component as well. It was sixty-two dollars. So there was no one amount based on a specific science. They literally were all different and again, because it was, they all agreed on seven different publishers. As, you know, from K to twelve.
Mrs. Justice, your question?
So one of the things that I was looking at with this, and I looked at it quite a bit and spoke with staff quite a bit about it, cause I did have a number of questions, because when you look at the categorical, categorical flex funding with the funding that we would get for instructional materials, this year we're adopting books, next year we're adopting books. I think it's math next year. I think it's English the year after that. Um, so that flex that we had, that million, that one, what was the exact number for the flex?
It was one, it was approximately one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, so traditionally, we are underfunded for instructional materials. What we're funded does not cover the cost. We will not be flexing money this year for spending next year. So whatever shortfalls we have will come from that general fund, and that was something I was really cognizant of, cognizant of, of making this decision. So, um, I just wanted to point that out.
And the more that I look at these numbers, Ms. Zork, to your question, if I went through and actually started right now, I'm at eight, nineteen hun, so, uh, one thousand nine hundred books difference. And that's just rounding and estimating at this point. But so you're about at two thousand books that would really make that difference. Actually, no, it's twenty-five hundred, cause you're third through fifth. And that's the other thing, too. Third through fifth grade, with both 1 and 1A, third through fifth grade, it's titled as a class set, but because your elementary students don't, don't transfer from one class and they're not departmentalized, it's really a class set anyway. So it sits on a shelf, but it's actually that student's book because that is their class all day long. So that was the other, you know, when you look at class sets versus not class sets, we're gonna title it a class set, but it's not really considered that, that student will actually have a book that is theirs. So there, it's just, it looked different when you look at elementary to secondary because they were all different.
Okay, so...
But it's roughly two thousand to twenty-two hundred books.
So based on what I'm seeing, eighty-seven thousand, nine eleven divided by twenty-five hundred is average thirty-five dollars a book. I'm better with that than I was at the, whenever I was trying to calculate the numbers out. It seemed like we were paying two hundred to four hundred dollars for our book, so thirty-five dollars.
That would be the average.
Average. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sirsi, you're recognized.
I'm not gonna support any, um, any recommendation that doesn't put a book in every student's backpack. Being from the old school, I know that there's a lot of people that can't understand computers. They don't have computers. And, uh, when we take them home, mom and dad, uh, maybe they can read the, the book, but they might not be able to handle the, uh, electronic devices. Probably they can handle their phone, but unless it puts a book in everybody's hand to take home with them, I won't support it. And I know money is what we always come down to, but education is our business. And if education comes from reading a hard copy of a book, we need to take that in mind. And I understand the money deal on it, but we're involved in education, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sirsi, for that perspective, and I appreciate the explanation, uh, for a potential no vote. I would like to, and I've kinda kicked myself for not asking this question in the workshop. Are you hearing from a lot of parents or constituents who are saying that they demand that? Cause that would certainly compel me, but I'm just not hearing it. No, okay. Mrs. Justice?
I just wanted to say, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Sirsi. Again, that was a concern of mine and that 1A, I have been assured that all parents will be offered a book to have at home if they feel that it's something they would like, and with this plan, we will make sure to accommodate that. So again, I, I, I hear your concern and I, I think it was recognized here, and I felt that this was a good compromise.
I agree. Mrs. Zork? Ask a question of Ms. Teskey?
No, I, I just have a comment.
Oh. May she sit down? Thank you so much, Mrs. Teskey.
So I...
Mrs. Zork, you're recognized.
Obviously, in the workshop, I was in favor of having a textbook sent home with every child, but after doing research, talking to teachers, talking with staff and members of the committee, there's not a high demand for the take-home books. And I believe that if we can cover it with the ten to fifteen extra, I, I'm changing my opinion based on just meeting and talking with individuals. I, um, I was concerned of how much the price of the book per book was gonna be, but now understanding that, I feel comfortable that thirty-five dollars average a book is very, um, doable. So I'm, I'm okay with option 1A tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and with that, all those in favor of adopting 1A signify by saying aye, aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. We got science books.
Not yet.
Yay. Three, one. Okay, very good. Action item B, approval of Innovation Florida contract. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually a very exciting agenda item, or at least it is for a lot of people. Um, we are going to offer a coding course, a computer coding course, to some juniors in our schools this summer. Um, twenty-four juniors will be eligible to take a coding course. Um, we have partnered with IRSC. The class will actually happen at the IRSC Mueller campus. And we have contracted, well, we hope to be contracting with a company out of Broward County, Code Schools. They ran a coding class just like this, or this coding class, last summer in Broward County, and it was a huge success. Um, the students who graduated, so to speak, from this course were ready to be employed in computer programming right away. We talk a lot about coding and computer programming, and students in our elementary schools and even our middle schools say they're coding. They're actually learning coding concepts. They're not usually writing computer code. In this summer course, they will be writing computer code. C++ Java, Ruby on Rails, Dr. Jones? Ruby on Rails, that's one of the latest, um, computer, um, programming languages. So this is state-of-the-art, um, right, real-world technology and training that we're gonna offer to our students. Um, the contract with Code Schools is less than fifty thousand dollars, so we didn't have to bring it to the board for approval tonight. But it is something that I wanted to highlight because it's an incredible learning opportunity for our students that we hope to provide for them this summer.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mrs. Justice, move approval. Mrs. Zork, second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mrs. Justice?
No, I think it's fantastic that we continue to have opportunities for our students to, yeah, I, of course, I wanna give comments. That's very funny. Um, I think it's wonderful that we...
Strong support. I really like this.
There you go, that.
Mrs. Zork, you're second.
I just wave in support.
Mr. Sirsi, you are recognized for a question or series of questions.
How will we select the twenty-four lucky students?
Dr. Jones, if you wanna come up, we've actually been working on that process.
Dr. Jones, let everyone know at, at home on TV who you are.
Dr. Peggy Jones. I'm the executive director for secondary schools. And just like Dr. Rendell said, this is very, very exciting. He didn't tell you the whole story. It was my first week here when he said, "I have a project for you." And then we began the process, um, talking with Broward County, how they implemented, how it went throughout the summer. They've actually taken it to their fall and spring semester, which will be our next step. And then I contacted, um, Mr. Bukar, who is Innovation Florida's CEO. And then we started meeting with Casey Lunsford. But as far as the students, I met with high school students week before last at both Sebastian River High School and Vero Beach High School. And we talked about the, uh, program and the commitment, and it's a big commitment. It is for eight weeks, Monday through Thursday, eight to three. I have a contract and, um, information for parents ready to go after board approval. And then I'm going to do a press release with Kristen and talk to our families about this. Um, my goal as far as the twenty-four students, to have gender equity, have our ethnicity represented. And they will apply by making the application, sending a resume, having a recommendation. So all that is ready to go once this is board approved. And then I'll probably meet with some people here. Now, when they started in Broward, they only had about a month's notice. They had seventeen students apply and seventeen students got in. But, um, we're looking at twenty-four, looking at the lab with, um, Mr. Lunsford, and continue to meet with, um, their young kids of like twenty-four and twenty-six, who also help run this program. But it's gonna be by application, then we will select the students. So hopefully we get at least twenty-four applications, but one thing we didn't say, they are offering this course, course now in Broward County to adults and it's fifteen thousand dollars to take the course. This would be unbelievable. They will come out, I had to talk to my daughter about Ruby on Rails and JavaScript and, but they will come out as junior web developers. And one other part of the contract is they will then work with these students about getting positions or internships, which are great. That's what sold the kids at the high schools. You're in college. You can work part-time with this, so if the kids are interested and I'm ready to go with this.
Neat, thank you. Any other questions?
I, I do. Uh, we're, we're spending, uh, forty thousand dollars on this program. How's it going to affect all of the students in our district? Is there any negative? I mean, it's forty thousand dollars and we, we do talk about money on a regular basis. So how's it gonna impact all the rest of the students?
So first of all, this money, we actually have sought a grant and we haven't heard back on the grant. We might actually get the grant and then it's not gonna come out of the general fund or anywhere else. Um, our community has supported us with a discretionary property tax millage. You may recall that the community renewed that millage August a year ago. And the funding for that renewed millage was to go to teachers, technology, and training, um, career and technical training. So if we do not get the grant, this, um, thirty-nine thousand, whatever, and change will actually come out of the millage money. So it won't affect the general fund at all.
One other thing, too, at the, um, technology conference, the superintendent for Broward County was talking about the success of their program in Broward County. So again, they're taking it into the school year, which is the next step, which I'd love to see in the coding classes. One other thing I added, I have to wait when I see the certification of the teacher, whether we can get some credit for our high school students, either in performing or practical art or career in tech. So I'm studying that right now, too. I have to get the teacher credentials on that.
Any other questions, Mr. Sirsi?
No, I'm good.
Comments, discussion? All those in favor signify, thank you, Dr. Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye? Any opposed? Nope, so it's a nay?
No, I don't, I don't have anything on that. Yes, yes is what I got.
Okay, so motion carries four, zero? Thank you. All right.
I didn't ever get a first and second on that. Who was it? Who did that?
Mrs. Justice and Mrs. Zork. Order of appearance. Okay, item C, approval of two thousand eighteen district summer school programs. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Action item C, we were talking about our comprehensive summer school program. Um, the two thousand eighteen summer school program, um, has various components. The budget for the program is one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Tentative budget for the summer school program. Um, the board did receive a presentation at a workshop earlier this month about the various summer school offerings. And so we're asking your approval of the summer school program tonight.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion. I can't make it.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Justice, Mrs. Zork. Mrs. Justice, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um, I would. Thank you. Um, so at the last time when we spoke about summer school, there were some decisions to be made about who would be running summer school. So have those decisions been made and have the sites been, everything's been, I see the sites, but have the decisions been made about who's gonna be running summer school?
Yes, I can pitch that to Mrs. Dampier if she'd like to handle that.
For the summer school, we've, uh, actually, we had summers, assistant principals apply for, um, summer school positions. This is very new, for our principals, uh, assistant principals to serve as principals. We're very excited to have, uh, four assistant principals. One will serve, for example, Vero Beach Elementary. We have Rachel Maury, who will serve as the summer school principal. Uh, for Dodger Town, we have, uh, Robin Bethel, uh, who's, who will serve as summer school principal. For Freshman Learning Center, we have Hillary Poole. He's currently at, uh, the school, at that school site. Storm Grove Middle School, we, uh, have Elise Hepburn, who will serve as, uh, summer school, uh, principal for the, um, for the month that we have those, uh, programs, um, allocated.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Recognize for a series of questions.
Thank you. Dr. Rendell, what, what was the thinking behind the assistant principals being chosen to run summer school?
Yeah, so, um, a lot of times when a assistant principal who aspires to be a principal, when they're interviewed or when they prepare themselves for that role, we ask them, you know, have you run, um, a department or have you been in charge of adults? Have you planned anything? And so summer school gives them the opportunity to actually run school. Um, these assistant principals will not just be managing the building during summer, during summer school. They are actually going to design the summer school offerings at those sites. They're going to interview and hire the teachers for those summer school sites. They're gonna actually run the budget and everything, and they will be in charge, um, of those summer school sites, um, during the summer. So it's a great way for assistant principals who aspire to become principals to get some, some hands-on learning experience, actually being in charge, even if only for a month in the summer. It's a, a learning experience that actually was provided to me when I was an assistant principal, aspiring to be a principal. I actually got to run a comprehensive summer school at a high school for two summers. Um, eight hundred students at summer school each of those summers, so that's a pretty good training ground. So we're offering that opportunity to our assistant principals.
And we also, um, for that, we had more, uh, we had a lot of applicants that wanted to, you know, participate in this initiative. Last year, we rotated assistant principals and it really wasn't as effective as actually having assigned principals at the sites to be the principal in charge. Um, so we're very excited, we, you know, to have these four participants selected.
And I'd really love to grow your own concept, but we'll also have Mrs. Dampier as a mentor and resource, right? Or someone you assign.
Yes, we all, as a matter of fact, the two executive directors will be meeting with the, uh, summer school principals next week and will be reviewing expectations. We'll be providing support along the way. So we're not just gonna hand the keys over to them and say, you know, that's it. We will provide support because we want them to be successful. So they're very excited about this opportunity.
Sure, thank you. Mrs. Zork, you had a question or comment?
I do. Um, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, what was our budget last year for, for summer school? And, um, I see here we have pending funding amounts. So what do we anticipate the actual amount to be?
So, I can tell you on the, in the, on the budget book, on page ninety-five, Project Five-O-Five, we reserved four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And on page ninety, our reading allocation, we have approximately two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So the budget is about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. If you go through the, um, the document you have in front of you, everything that affects the general fund is about six hundred and one thousand dollars. So we have the appropriate budget set aside for, to run summer school.
So do we, it...
You're recognized for a series of questions.
So are we, um, on target of what we spent last year?
I, I don't have the expenditures tallied for last year. I could get you that information, but I, I'm ensuring you that the budget is in place for the current year.
Okay. Just, the reason I'm asking is, unfortunately, well, fortunately, as a board member, we always get the, the negative emails that, about teachers not having adequate supplies to run the summer program. I just wanted to make sure that we are making sure we have enough funding to incorporate enough supplies.
I believe on page, it's three of three in, in the board agenda. There is a, there are funds allotted for custodial and health supplies, that kind of thing, for the school, um, for the, uh, for the summer program. We're aware of that. I believe we may also throw in a little for cleanup costs. We typically get that at the end of, of the summer program.
I appreciate that, but, uh, what I'm hearing is that teachers aren't having enough supplies to run the, the summer program. So I just wanna make sure that we have, have enough funding to cover the supplies.
For the reading categorical, for third grade reading, we are, uh, we, we allocated that into the budget for third grade.
Okay.
For our secondary, um, we're utilizing some of the resources we currently have, so it's nothing extra that they'll, uh, need to run the program.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, some districts don't even offer secondary summer school.
They don't.
It's kind of a unique opportunity for our district. Mr. Sirsi, you're recognized for a question or series of questions.
Thank you very much. The question that I have is who, um, is a summer school program for students that are behind? Or is it so that they can get extra credit? Or what, what is the real purpose? I remember what summer school was when I was in school, but I, I didn't have to go, by the way, but, obviously I should've, but, uh, but I mean, who benefits and... But, but I mean, who benefits and, and what, who goes? Why don't they go?
As you heard earlier tonight, Step Into K and Voluntary Pre-K, those are opportunities for our kids to, to get additional support, to prepare them for kindergarten. Our third grade reading program, that's for our level one students, mandatory retention. If students make a level one in reading, we do have to provide summer school for them and give them another opportunity to take the test and pass the test as well so they can move on to fourth grade. So that's third grade. Our secondary summer school, we have E.L.A. in math for middle and high school. Those opportunities are for students who are behind and we're offering live teachers who are actually teaching content. So we're no longer offering A.L.S. where they sit behind a computer and make up coursework. This is instruction by our teachers. So they are making lesson plans, creating lesson plans, and teaching in the classroom.
Mrs. Justice?
No, just the idea of A.L.S., the idea that a student couldn't pass the course and do well with a live teacher in the classroom and then you would stick them behind a computer and expect that they would do well in that environment, is, is just the thinking, the logic, there's no logic there to me. So I think, as you pointed out, having secondary summer school is a wonderful opportunity for our students and I'm happy that we're able to, to provide the students with that support.
And then we also have our extended school year, which are E.S.E. students. We provide that opportunity for them to provide additional instruction for them over the summer as well. So we have an increase, actually, from last year. So we're very excited about that.
And specific to the E.S.E., it is I.E.P.-driven. And if the I.E.P. determines that the student needs an extended school year, we do earn the F.T.E. for that.
And the secondary courses, those are all core courses, right?
We're only offering it for E.L.A. and math, yes.
Got it, okay. So we're not offering summer basket weaving or ballet? So, you know, okay. Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item D, approval to purchase students' PCs from C.D.W.-G through the school district of Volusia County Contract CPT seven five zero N as of November. Contract for district-wide refresh. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item D and in the upcoming item E are both technology purchases. In item D, we are seeking approval to purchase student computers to be distributed throughout the district as part of our ongoing refresh cycle. This refresh will target desktop computers that are over six years old and due for replacement. The cost will be two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars and will be funded through the zero point five voter-approved millage. Mr. Green, anything to add?
Just that, as typical, we don't order monitor with these. We order only the PC. We put our monitors on about a ten-year refresh cycle unless they fail earlier. As you saw in the surplus inventory, we got rid of some PCs earlier this evening of the consent agenda and those ranged in ages from two thousand four to two thousand eight, so ten to fourteen years old. We're trying to replace those that are six years and older. And usually, we bring forward about a thousand to fifteen hundred. We're breaking up in a smaller unit of five hundred so we don't have a big delay in the warehouse while our staff gets those out and then we'll make a second order later.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Mrs. Ork moves approval? I'll, okay, Mrs. Justice seconds. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I just wouldn't thank the voters for approving the millage so that we can buy this, buy these products for our, our students.
Very good. Mrs. Justice, your second?
Yes, sir. I agree with Mrs. Ork. These are computers that will be in classrooms and computer labs. So students will be doing i-ready on these computers and progress monitoring work and all of these different things. So definitely, thank you to the voters for allowing us to continue to keep our schools up to date.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Circe, you recognize for a question or a series of questions?
What do we do with the, the computers that we dispose of? Do we just throw them in the dump or what do we do with them? They're still good computers, I would imagine.
Well, actually, they, they've, both by the time we get rid of them, their life, as you said, maybe i-ready. It would, you'd be sitting there for ten or fifteen minutes just to boot it up. So we have a process through the purchasing department by which a vendor, a recycling vendor, comes and gives us anywhere from five to thirty-five dollars. It depends on if there's any value left in them. They then take the hard drives, destroy them, give us a certification of destruction that all the data's been off of it and they pick those up. And we do get some residual value, but it's, it's de minimis.
But the vendor actually scrubs them or whatever you call that.
They scrub them and, nope. And they recycle parts or whatever they do with them. But they take them out of our district and.
Okay.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item E, approval to purchase uninterruptible power supplies, UPSs, from C.D.W.-G through the school district of Volusia County Contract CPT seven five zero N as of November. For district-wide refresh. Dr. Rendell, you recognize to present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item E, we're seeking approval to replace these UPSs throughout the district as part of our ongoing refresh cycle. Again, this refresh will replace failing UPSs at schools throughout the district. These UPSs are used in the networking data closets to keep the network components running during power outages. UPSs also protect the networking equipment from power surges and brownouts. The cost will be two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and also will be funded through the zero point five voter-approved millage. Mr. Green, anything to add?
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. This is not as fancy as computers and as widely seen on the front end. However, as you remember, when we go through hurricanes and power outages, we have many components from bell systems to phones to computers, network, internet, many things that run through our network. And these are the backend components in the closets that keep that stuff operational, especially during emergencies. So these are eight to twelve years old and older, mainly because their power units have failed.
Entertained a motion?
Move to approve.
Mrs. Ork moves approval? I'll second that motion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Again, just thank you to the voters for the approved millage, for giving us this opportunity to make this purchase.
Thanks, voters. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item F, approval to award request for proposal, RFP fifteen dash zero dash two zero one eight slash J.C. to Brightview Landscaping Services Incorporated for Lawn Maintenance District Wide. Dr. Rendell, will you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, action item F and action item G are related. Action item F is the RFP for contracted services for lawn maintenance district-wide. And then in action item G, it's the actual awarding of the contract. Mr. Morrison, if you could speak to action item F?
Yes, sir. In action item F, we are seeking to approve the proposal to Brightview Landscaping for lawn maintenance district-wide. This was an item that was of interest to the district's audit committee. And on January twenty-third, we met with the district's audit committee and did a presentation. Part of the presentation, or the cornerstone of the presentation, was that when we compared the cost of doing the service in-house versus the outsourcing, there was an estimated savings just in year one alone of over four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars versus year two, which you don't have to obviously purchase the equipment. There was another, further savings of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We fully vetted the information with the audit committee and I could safely say, and the chairman is here with us tonight, that the audit committee were appreciative of the information that they received and the district's strategy in trying to save the taxpayers money. Mr. Teske, if there's anything you may add, because you deal with the operational aspect of it?
No, I'd just like to concur with that, that the, the principals are pleased with the service. They're, they're pleased with the feedback we're getting with the, the service. This, this company is cutting on the weekends. They're accommodating us for special events, testing, sporting events. They're very flexible with, with our needs. And we, we did show a savings from in-house as far as what the audit committee did show, so.
And finally, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that they did sharpen the pencil in their RFP. It costs more to mow on the weekend than it did in the week in the original proposal. And what they did is that they combined and gave the district the rate that they would charge in the regular week and they are mowing on the weekend. So minimal disruption, if any, to instructional time.
Anyone who's ever had to take a test with a weed, with a blower going on outside, that's certainly a huge advantage. Okay, I guess that was out of order, whatever. All right. Chair, I'll entertain a motion. I'm out of order. Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, move approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Justice.
I'd like to see my name in the minutes.
There you go.
Yeah.
You're number one. Can I get a second? Mr. Circe, thank you for your second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mrs. Justice?
No, sir.
Mr. Circe, your second.
No, sure.
Any further discussion?
Well, I am gonna say this. Thank you. I did set through the, the presentation that was made to the audit committee and I appreciate for them to ask for this presentation because I did learn a lot from it. And it, based on the, all the information I was given, it is a huge savings to the district for us to outsource it. So I, so I appreciate the presentation.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Members, we are on item G. It is now eight oh one. Would it please the board to take a five-minute informal recess?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. We are, we stand in informal recess until eight oh six. Time on deck, eight oh six.
Aunt Laura.
The hammer down. And we are back. Right, I should have checked with the AV guys. We're good, all right. And we are live. Action item G. Approval of agreement for contracted services lawn maintenance district-wide. RFP fifteen dash zero dash two zero one eight JC. Dr. Randell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and action item F, you actually approved the RFP. Action item G, we're just asking you to approve the contract for the outside lawn service.
No tip-approve.
Whoa, 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 wow. After, it's good to invigorate you guys, okay.
It's getting late, man.
Dr. Randell, or, Mr. Cersei. You have, you are, you had the motion, Mrs. Zork, you had the second. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope.
Your second.
No.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Action item H. Approval to award request for proposal RFP fourteen dash zero dash two zero one eight JC to Advanced Roofing Incorporated as a primary vendor and Crowther Roofing and Sheet Metal of Florida and High Tech Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated as alternates for roof repair and maintenance. Dr. Randell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, actually, action item H and I go together as well. This is an annual process for us to select and contract with roofers for annual roof maintenance that's done over the summer. So, action item H, we're asking you to approve the RFP for these two firms, and then action item I will be asking you to approve the various contracts or the ability to contract with them. Mr. Morrison, action item H.
Only to add that all statutes and processes and procedures have been followed, and they received no bid protests. This brings to a close the procurement process with board approval of the awards. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chair, let entertain a motion at this time.
We have approval.
Mr. Cersei moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zork seconds, would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei?
Nope.
Mrs. Zork, your second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any opposed?
No.
All right. Action item I, approval of agreement for contracted services roof repair and maintenance services per RFP fourteen dash zero dash two one, two zero one eight JC, just referenced the previous item. Dr. Randell, would you like to present the item?
Yes, action item K, we're just asking, actually, item I, actually, we're just asking for approval to approve the contracts for the roofing vendors.
Move approval.
Mr. Cersei moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Justice seconds. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei?
No, sir.
Your second, Mrs. Justice.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item J, approval to award RFQ zero, number zero three dash zero two zero one eight JC to multiple firms for civil engineering services. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, actually, action items J and K are also paired. In action item J, we're asking for approval of the RFQ for various civil engineering firms for civil engineering services. Mr. Morrison?
Only thing to add, sir, that all statutes, process, and procedures have been followed, and we have received no bid protests. This brings to a close the procurement process with the board approval of the award. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chair, let entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Cersei moves approval. Mrs. Justice seconds, would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei?
Nope.
Your second, Mrs. Justice.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. K, approval of the School District of Indian River County Florida Agreement Form for a Continuing Services Contract for Civil Engineering Services RFQ number zero three dash zero dash two zero one eight JC. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and action item K, we're seeking approval for the continuing services agreement to those five firms related to action item J.
Move approval.
Mrs. Cersei moves for approval, Mrs. Zork moves for the second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei?
Nope.
Your second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do you need to take a break? L, approval to renew agreement for security officer services with All Pro Security Services Lieutenant Limited, or LTD, Limited Corporation. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and action item L, we are seeking approval to renew our contract with this firm, All Pro Security Services, for security services they provide at three of our locations after hours. We're not going to disclose which locations those are as a matter of security. This is the firm that we've been using for the last several years. We have been asking for improved performance from them over the last year, and we have received that, so that's why we're seeking to renew the agreement with them. The total amount is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents.
Chair, let entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mrs. Justice moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zork seconds. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mrs. Justice?
Yes, sir, there was some confusion as when some people, community members, were reviewing our agenda for tonight, or had heard that there was a security services item on our agenda, and just wanted to ask Dr. Randell to clarify exactly why we had initially contracted the services of this organization.
Absolutely, so, at several of our school sites, we've had incidents of crime and violence happen after hours. Basically, we've had theft, breaking and entering, vandalism and that type of thing. So, we've contracted with various security firms over the years to provide security after hours, and that's what this is. This is provide security after hours at several, three of our sites, and, you know, we haven't had any issues of vandalism or breaking and entering or that types of, any issues in the past year, so.
Could be any of them, don't try us. Any further discussion? Mr. Cersei?
Okay. Yeah, a question, you said, I think I heard you say in your comments there that we had asked them for improved services, what was the downfall?
You remember last year, in the previous year, we had a couple incidences where we didn't think that they responded properly to some of the after-hours incidences, and we asked them to change some of their procedures, and they did, and so we've seen an improved performance. I really don't want to say too much more than that.
That's fine, that's fine. You just, you mentioned it, and I wanted to know why.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any further questions? No motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item M, approval to renew request for proposal RFP number two zero one six dash one two, RFP for low voltage with multiple contractors. Dr. Randell, would you like to present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and action item M, we're seeking approval to renew this RFP for a period of one year. This is, low voltage is bells and whistles. For a long time, we had a lot of issues with a lot of the PA systems at our schools, the intercom systems, and the bells, and that kind of thing, and we really didn't have a group of our maintenance personnel that were trained in these areas, and so we contracted the services, and so this is one of those contracted services that is helping us with those bells and whistles and those types of things. Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
Nothing further to add at this time, Dr. Randell.
Chair, let entertain a motion.
Move.
Mr. Cersei moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zork seconds the motion. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei?
No, sir.
Your second, Mrs. Zork.
No, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item N, approval to renew with multiple contractors RFQ number zero seven dash zero dash two zero one seven JC, pre-qualify multiple contractors for participation in hard-bid construction projects expected to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and action item F, we're seeking approval to move forward with the process to pre-qualify multiple contractors in accordance with the requirements of SREF, who have the appropriate licenses, bond and capacity, surety rating, insurance, and experience to participate in hard-bid projects that exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
Nothing further to add except that this is the request to approve this for one, one additional year. We went through the certification process last year, so if you have a hard-bid project coming up, you have a pool of contractors that are ready to go, and that will help us significantly in terms of scheduling and the time that we have to go out for procurement. So, we ask the board's approval for the renewal for one more year.
Chair, let entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mrs. Justice moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zork seconds. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I just think that this process is really good considering the business that we're in, which is educating students and the time cycle of things that need to get done in accordance with, you know, the school year, so I'm supportive of this.
Okay. Mrs. Zork, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
Do you have a sense for how much total we're approving at this point?
Mr. Morrison, any?
I'm sorry, I missed that, sir.
How much total in dollars are we approving at this time?
Anything that is expected to exceed three hundred thousand would be in the five-year capital plan already slated for construction. I know that there's going to be some reorientation due to security, so this would be a perfect example where if you had a multiple range of projects that would exceed that amount, you have somebody ready to hard-bid, so the question, I can't really answer the question with a qualified, quantified number, but that would have already been approved in your five-year capital plan.
But just to be clear to anyone who's watching this, we're not approving, you know, seven, six million dollar projects.
No, sir.
Right, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item O, renewal of agreement with Neighbors, Giblin, and Nickerson, PA for bond council services. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Yes, in action item O, we're seeking approval to renew this agreement with Neighbors, Giblin, and Nickerson, PA for bond council services. This is something that is in part of the agreement that we can renew. Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I would like to recognize and thank publicly Mr. The Chairman of the Audit Committee, Mr. Arwater. As soon as this renewal came up, I reached out to him immediately to draw on his years of experience in this field. He sent back to me a pretty significant spreadsheet that he obtained from the Division of Bond Financing. It had over a billion and a half dollars' worth of issuers. Fortunately for us, we are actually not on that list as a large issuer. We actually looked through eighteen district school boards at their issuance, and we narrowed it down to, let's just go with our geographical area. We looked at St. Lucie County, Martin, Brevard. We looked at their bond council agreements. We did some consulting with each other on this, and we determined that, you know, the fees that are being charged on an as-needed basis, this is not a monthly retainer, this is no cost, we only pay when we use if we go out for any sort of debt issuance. So, Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me, I'd like Mr. Arwater, if you would like to comment on this at all.
Chairman, Arwater, will you take the podium? Don't worry, we're going to pay you twice as much as normal for tonight.
I'm glad to hear that. What I did was I reached out to Division of Bond Finance up in Tallahassee, knowing some contacts up there, and we, the purpose was to do a sanity check in terms of the bond council fee, so I did some additional analysis. All they gave was the amount of bond issuance and the total charges that occurred, so I broke it down by bond and did some other things. Gave it to Mr. Morrison, and then he did some additional work with his staff, and I agree with his conclusion that the fees are reasonable. If you're getting ready to do a deal right now, you could maybe push them in certain spots, but given it's a renewal of a long-term contract, not being contemplating issuance, I would say that the fees are reasonable to go and approve the contract.
Thank you. Mrs. Justice, you have a question or comment?
Yes, if Mr. Arwater could maybe introduce himself and perhaps give a little bit of background about why his expertise in this area is so valuable to us on the Audit Committee.
Absolutely, without bragging too much, Mr. Arwater.
Well, I was involved in the bond markets for thirty-four years and ran a large bond management group for Vanguard for the last thirteen years of my career.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for your volunteer service on the Audit Committee, and we are truly blessed to have, you know, brilliant minds such as yourself to call upon. Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. I don't have a motion or a second here, so.
Move approval.
Okay, Mrs. Justice moves approval.
Second.
You'll take that as a second. Mrs. Zork seconds, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, sir.
Your second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, action item P. Approval of Florida Department of Education Office of Educational Facilities, Florida Inventory of School Houses, FISH certification of facilities data. Dr. Randell.
Thank you, and action item P, we're seeking approval for the Florida Department of Education Office of Educational Facilities, Florida Inventory of School Houses, or FISH certification of facilities data for the School District of Indian River County. Basically, all of our buildings and property, we have to have records of this FISH capacity, how many students the buildings can accommodate and that kind of thing, and we're bound by statute to send this report to Tallahassee every year, actually by April first, I believe is the deadline. So, we reviewed our FISH documents, this Florida Inventory of School Houses document, and make sure it's accurate, and we're asking the board to approve it so we can send it up to the state.
Let entertain a motion. Mr. Cersei moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Zork seconds, would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope.
No, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have an action item Q. Added two twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen. Approval to terminate probationary instructional employee. Dr. Randell, would you present the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and actually, in action item Q, we are asking approval to terminate an employee's contract. Anytime that we consider ending someone's employment, that's a very serious decision. In this situation, we decided that this is what was in the best interest of the students involved, and so that's why we're bringing this termination forward. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Randell. Chair, let entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mrs. Cersei moves approval.
Second.
Mrs. Justice seconds, would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cersei? Your second. Discussion. I would like to say that I really hate that we have to do this in public. I wish that there was some way that we could change the sunshine laws to where we didn't have to fire people on TV and have it published in there in the permanent record, but just one lonely school board member. Okay, and with that, no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Randell, you're recognized to give your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked earlier today about how eventful the last seven to ten days have been, and how emotional the last seven to ten days have been. Today, I actually enjoyed a different type of emotion. Today, I kicked off classroom connection. You might say, what is classroom connection? So, all of the district-level leadership personnel who possess a teaching certificate have been asked to go and co-teach for a day. So, I was the first one. Never ask for people to do something that you cannot do or will not do yourself. So, I went today and co-taught seventh-grade civics at Storm Grove Middle School with Mr. Dan Dupuy, and I had a lot of fun. It was great to be in the classroom all day, working with students, and I actually did lesson plan with Mr. Dupuy last week, so we co-taught the lesson today, and it was a lot of fun. It was great to be in there, in with the students, and working with young people, challenging at times, and I did remember that teaching six periods on your feet all day is exhausting, and I was exhausted by the end of the day, and then I'd
And then come and do this.
Come here and do this. But it was rewarding, and what was great is the students were asking me when I was coming back, so that was the thing that kind of made me feel the best about it. So, all of the other district-level leadership personnel who have a teaching certificate will be going out and teaching, co-teaching, with a teacher in the classroom. We decided to do it as a co-teach, rather than have us go in and just take over the class as like a substitute and let the teacher go for the day. We wanted to work with the teacher, we wanted to plan with the teacher, we wanted to be there in the trenches with them to feel what they experienced when they're teaching our students every day. In fact, some of us are teaching twice over the next six weeks. I'm teaching again second grade, I believe, at Beechland Elementary in a couple weeks, so. The goal, though, for us is to get a clearer picture of the action on the front lines. We make a lot of decisions, basically every decision we make affects the classroom, and so we need to make sure that we maintain that connection to the classroom, and so that's why we came up with the term classroom connection for this endeavor that we're going to do, and I can't wait to go to Beechland and teach second grade. With that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the report, Dr. Randell. We are now members on discussion. There are none listed on the agenda. I'll just move from my right to my left. Mrs. Zork, do you have any discussion items?
It was security, but we exhausted that in the beginning.
Good, okay. Mrs. Cersei, any discussion items? Mrs. Justice?
I agree with Mrs. Zork. It was security that I wanted to discuss as a board together, but we've done that today numerous times, and I hope that the public feels that we have, that we are on top of things, and I do, again, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please reach out to us, and I know Mr. Foss shared his contact information, but we're all here to listen and to work with you to ensure that our schools are safe for our students. And thank you to our teachers every day who work in classrooms, keeping students safe, because you truly are the most, such an important connection, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than the safety, and I appreciate the beginning of this conversation, and we certainly will continue it as we move along. And with that, we move into board member matters. Mrs. Zork, would you like to cut this off?
Well, I was able to travel to Tallahassee, and I was primarily working on the support for the Job Growth Grant that we have put in for a Technical Education Center, and it's basically two point seven million is what it's valued at. Got a lot of good input from legislators, legislative aides, and also different departments on how to move forward, and they have recommended that we treat it as if we filed a bill and we continue, keep adding the information to it. So, I've been out the last couple weeks trying to get letters of support throughout the community with leaders in our community. I've sat with Dr. Randell and Dr. Arnett and Kristy Shields. We're going to be presenting to the County Commission on March sixth. If you would like to attend that, please, please come out, and then at that time, I'm hoping we can get another letter of support from them. On March twentieth, I have it set also with Dr. Randell, Dr. Arnett, and Kristy Shields to present to the Economic Development Council, and I believe that meeting's at three thirty. So, I'm just really trying to get more support from our community so that we can send those letters, stay in front of the governor, because they issued, well, the day that I got to Tallahassee, they issued thirty-five million dollars of the eighty-five million dollar grant fund, so there's still fifty million out there, two point seven million plus eight hundred thousand. It's a drop in the hat compared to what some of the other grant applications have asked for, so I just asked for the board's support. If you have anyone that you're in contact with that would write a letter on behalf of this, please. Dr. Arnett has the contact information that we're getting. We have contact information for Governor Scott Sissy Proctor, who is the Executive Director for the Department of Economic Opportunities, is that correct? And then Peter Antinachi, he is the new CEO with Enterprise Florida. So, those are the three people that we're sending the letters to, because those are the three people that are making the decision on who gets the money. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Cersei, have anything for school member matters? Nothing. Mrs. Justice?
I wonder if Mrs. Justice has anything to say tonight. First of all, I want to really applaud Laura for taking the initiative to make this happen. I'm very excited about the new career in Technical College that will be opening this coming fall, and I think that this is such an amazing opportunity, and thank you for seizing, you know, our community is so helpful in so many ways, and I think this is such another, such an important way for us to involve our community in doing the good work that we do in this school district and providing opportunities to our students, so thank you very much for that, and I will reach out to some community partners to get some letters of support. I just wanted to highlight, you know, so many of our schools, Dr. Randell spoke a little bit about that what happened in Parkland, and we've talked about security in general, and so many of our schools and our students have shown us in many different ways, ways to show compassion and empathy, and students and teachers have really worked with students to give them opportunities to express how they feel about the tragedy that happened just out the south of us, and so to all of the teachers that had students write letters, I know the school district just sent a number of letters down to Parkland, to Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. I saw a video of some students that were sending a video message saying that they loved the students there and supporting them there on their first day back. And I know Vera Beach High School, for seventeen days, will have seventeen desks that will sit empty in their senior courtyard in remembrance of the seventeen people that lost their lives. So, I'm just very proud of this school district for not only taking the steps to ensure the safety and security of our students, but also remembering the lives lost and really celebrating these people, and, you know, I think it's been a wonderful opportunity for our students to show compassion and kindness. Last, at the beginning of the month, we actually had a volunteer reception where we recognized the volunteers that we have across the district. And we have so many amazing volunteers. I don't know if Dr. Rendell will call off the top of his head how many volunteer hours had been accumulated this past year.
It was over seven hundred.
Over seven hundred hours of volunteering. So, it was pretty amazing. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the people that won the volunteer of the year. Mara Dukes won as the, so we have three categories of volunteers. There's a senior division, a adult division, and a student division. And so, Mara Dukes won. And Shaquana Speed won for the adults. And Elizabeth Cisneros is a student. And she actually works at VBE and volunteers there. And she won not only for student volunteer, but volunteer of the year overall. So, just very proud and thankful for the volunteers that give so many hours to the students and the teachers in our school district. It's just awesome. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, you know, I'm on, a member of the Moonshot Community Action Network as this district is, and I'm very involved with the Learning Alliance. And I wanted to talk a little bit about something that Mr. Foss and I actually got to experience, which was Literacy Lane. So, a couple of weeks ago, we took a stroll through the downtown of Vera Beach. And Brooke Flood was a guide with Leslie Connolly from the Learning Alliance. And we walked down, through the downtown of Vera Beach and different shop owners had put up pages of a book called Scaredy Squirrel on the window. And so, we went through and we read the book as we walked along the streets and we talked to the kids about the book and different ideas. And it was really just a wonderful way to include our community, this community-wide commitment to literacy and to involve our community members and our businesses in doing that. So, thank you to Brooke for doing such a great job helping to read Scaredy Squirrel. And I think we had, it was a beautiful day and just a great way to celebrate literacy. And so, that will be for the whole month. So, if you're looking for something fun to do with your kids, the Indian River County Main Library downtown, you can start there and they will give you a map to go through Literacy Lane. And I know it's the hope of the Learning Alliance and the Moonshot Moment Group to expand this program into North County, Felsmere, South County. So, I'm looking forward to that. Every opportunity that we have to engage our students in reading is a great opportunity. So, with that, sir, I am done.
Thank you. And as chairman, I get to do all sorts of cool stuff like the volunteer of the year or Scaredy Squirrel or chat with the chairman of the Education Committee in the House and tell them to put the money in safe schools. But I want to thank Mrs. Justice for inviting me to do something that I haven't done a whole lot of. And that's to go to schools on Valentine's Day and to give out cookies and read a book with classic kindergartners, and I believe they're fourth graders, Taylor's classes?
Fourth, third grade and kindergarten, yeah.
And members, if you're not doing that sort of stuff, I'll tell you, there's a concept called filling up your bucket. And if you forget why we do this, I would highly recommend that. I mean, the other stuff is neat, you get recognition. But, you know, when a little kid who probably doesn't do a whole lot of hugging runs up and gives you a hug, that's something. So, I would encourage you to do that. And with that, that's the end of my member matters. Information agenda, there is nothing. Dr. Rendell, you're recognized for superintendent's closing.
No further comments, Mr. Chair.
Anything for the good of the district? Go for the business. We are adjourned.